Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two meetings, July, or excuse me, June 15th, 2015, and July 13th, 2015, a special meeting. Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Diane?
I had one small addition I would propose for the June 13th minutes on page three, item six.
July 13th or June 15th?
July 13th, sorry.
Okay.
Item six, second paragraph, I think it'd be good to add an explanation why the ordinance was deferred. So I would add at the end of the sentence, "So that the required public hearing could be held."
Is that okay with the motion maker in the second?
Yes.
Okay, "so that the required public hearing could be held." Any other additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Additions to the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. We'll move on to petitions and communications. Todd Satterthwaite, welcome back.
Thanks for allowing me to, a couple of minutes. I just want to address you for just a minute on the new business. The first item is a ZBA case for a property I own at 703 West High Street. I'm just here to answer any of your questions. I also want to thank Councilmember Brown for finding a procedural error in the zoning Board of Appeals when this came to them the first time that allowed it to go back a second time, and thank Kevin Garcia and the planning staff for coming up with a condition that seemed to satisfy everybody at the zoning Board of Appeals where it got a unanimous vote to come to the city council. And with that, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Apparently no questions. Thank you very much. If anybody would like to testify to the council, would you please fill out one of these cards? They're at the back, at the table at the back. Okay, Odessa Vogel?
Does she step out or something?
Is she here? Odessa Vogel? Okay.
I don't want to speak right now, I just wanted to-
Oh, you don't want to speak? Okay, you're just recorded as being against. I think you're talking about the first two items, 066 and 067, rather than 077? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We will note that. Mary Brooks?
She's-
Did you want to speak, Mary Brooks?
She stepped out to the restroom.
Okay, she is opposed to-
At the time, at the time of it.
Oh, all right, we'll put that aside. Bishop King James Underwood and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood do not wish to speak, however, they're continually concerned about the problems with the Ellis subdivision. Are you Mary Brooks?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to say anything about what you're concerned about?
Sure.
Okay, come on up and speak into the microphone if you want to talk, or you want to wait till later?
Can we have that over, do you have that ready, Tom?
It's coming up. It'll be the first thing that we deal with after people speak.
Next time you're dealing with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, I was trying to flat out about my house being shot in.
Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Gina Paluso? Just when you were going to sit down.
Good evening. My name's Gina Paluso and I live in Urbana. So I came tonight because I saw an article in the paper on Saturday regarding brick streets in Urbana. I guess there was some conversation that took place between a member of the community and the mayor, and, you know, I don't really know the entire context that the conversation took place regarding. What I read was that the city is no longer going to be dealing with PACA in hanging on to the old historic bricks that are in the streets. So I just, I guess, came to question if that is true, and if it is true, why we're doing that. I was a little bit concerned when we talked about repaving Broadway, and I know it needs to be repaved, I don't have a problem with repaving it, you know, it's obviously in really bad shape, but I was concerned because I was like, I hope we're going to hang on to the bricks and give them to PACA, because someday I'd like to repave my driveway with bricks from the city of Urbana. So I just wanted to bring that up and just ask the question, if we are dealing with PACA, great, if we're not, why not? And if not, what are we going to do with those bricks once we pull them up?
We are going to reuse the bricks, about half of them, and the rest of them are open for the public to take or to buy, including PACA. And PACA is also welcome to use the bricks that are stored in another part of the city, which they've been using before. So the decision was made at the city council that we should open it up to everybody, rather than just giving it to one group.
Understood. So how would a member of the community get those bricks if they wanted to? Would that be something through the Landscape Recycling Center, or how would we go about getting them if we want them?
Yeah, I think it's the Landscape Recycling Center is the main place.
It's our intention to sell those bricks at the Landscape Recycling Center, so they can be available to anybody in the public.
And would it be around the same price that PACA would charge?
We haven't set that price yet, but we would do a little bit of a survey to see what bricks like that, street bricks, would go for, but it would be, you know, a competitive cost-effective price.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
Would you, okay, Mr. Swisher, would you like to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, there's a question.
This may well be my failing senior memory, but I don't remember discussing this in council.
It was apparently discussed in February, when we talked about Broadway.
Ah, that's when I had my surgery, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Swisher, would you like to address the council?
I didn't see my name on the agenda, and I thought Mr. Roberts had arranged that.
What we do is, people fill out a little card, so if Roberts is not here, but-
Well, if I'm not mistaken, you gave me permission to appear before this group.
I invited you, yes, I did. You are correct.
My name's Bob Swisher. I've been a volunteer for PACA since 1983. I've been on their board of directors three times, I've never held an office, and I feel that the city of Urbana has reneged on a verbal agreement that has been enforced for nine or 10 years. I gave this council a two-page overdraft last Monday night to make you all aware of it. Since that time, I had a meeting with her honor that lasted probably an hour and a half. It was a very cordial meeting. We discussed my four years on the Urbana Planning Commission. We discussed her input on the Police Training Association. We talked about a lot of things other than pavers. I think the only thing we disagreed on, I made a statement during the meeting that I had worked with four supervisors in nine or 10 years that I've been selling pavers, and she informed me that after Jimmy Kelly, that Mr. Williams was the next supervisor. And I believe there were two supervisors in between there that I worked with, a Mr. Stratton and a Mr. Coin. How did it all start? I wasn't there. Mr. Gray can probably attest to that better than I can, but Mr. Kelly told me he had a discussion with Mr. Gray eight or nine years ago about seeing if PACA would be interested in taking bricks off our hands, because they didn't have a place to put them, and they didn't have the manpower to sell them. I met with Mr. Kelly, and I said, "Well, why don't you use public service workers?" And he said, "We can't use public service workers for a profit, or we'd get in trouble with Local 703, the labor union." And I said, "If this is a good deal, I don't know why the city's so eager to give it to me." And he said, "Well, Swish, we don't have a place to put the bricks, and we don't have enough manpower to handle them." And I said, "Well, let me look into it." I said, "The only reason I would look into it, I was involved in an earthquake in 1970 in Glendale, California, where I saw them reclaim bricks, and people were buying them, and those were just regular bricks, and I didn't know much about pavers." So I went to Jim Galvin, who owned English Brothers and O'Neill Brothers. I went to Gene Lamb, who owned Champagne Asphalt Company. I went to the owner of Cross Construction Company. Unfortunately, all three of those people are no longer with us. But all of them, to a man, said, "See Jim Atchison from Somers and Bar," because if there was anybody in town that knew anything about pavers, it was him. I knew Jim personally, he was a year behind me in school, and I sought him out and told him what Mr. Kelly had suggested, and he said, "Swish, have you ever heard the phrase, 'Be careful what you ask for, you may get it'?" He said, "This will be the hardest work you've ever done." He said, "They're heavy, they're dirty, they have mold on them, they have dust on them, but he says they are popular, and you should sell them for a buck apiece, but it's a real undertaking." So I talked to Karen Coomer, who was our executive director at that time, and I talked to our board of directors, and we decided to accept Mr. Kelly's offer, and she said, my board of directors said, "Make sure that this is all done legally with the city of Urbana." So Mr. Kelly and I met with the city manager and Mr. Waller, I think was the city attorney at that time, and Kelly briefly said what they wanted to do, and I think the city manager's retort was, "They gave us a house, and we can't give them bricks that we don't want." And then Mr. Waller said that he had seen certification from the state of Illinois that PACA was on the list to receive surplus or unused property from the state of Illinois, and all he was concerned about was that the public service workers had insurance. So I had to provide the city of Urbana with a certificate of insurance. Bill May also told the city of Urbana, he's the Champagne County probation officer, that the county has those people insured, so they were pretty well protected. I then sought about a place to put these pavers, and I got with me a letter from, yeah, and yeah, there's, I got copies of the letter from the owner of the property next door to PACA, who had a 20 by 60 lot behind his house. Yeah, would you pass these around for him, please? His name is David Spears, and he and his significant under own Radio Marie in downtown Champagne. They had a lot behind their building next door to the PACA warehouse on Walnut Street. It was 20 by 60. The city of Urbana brought over four dump loads of pavers that consisted of about 60% pavers and 40% dirt. I ran a little column in my Saturday morning News Gazette article that said PACA would be selling pavers for 50 cents. Small paragraph at the end of my article. I can tell you the name of the couple that bought the first 100 paragraphs. I can tell you the name of the first person who had 70 hours of public service to work on. He owned two restaurants on campus, and when he finished his 70 hours, he invited us all out for dinner. I had him back in a year again, because he had another 100 hours to do, and, but he came with open-toed shoes and a chauffeur and dug out bricks. When we were through with that lot at the end of the year, PACA paved that, bought sod and soted that 20 by 60 thing, and we have some pictures of what it looks like now behind PACA. The following year, Linda and Darryl Fausti gave us a lot on East Main Street in Urbana. And for seven months, the city of Urbana dumped pavers on that lot. And Mr. and Mrs. Fausti probably dug more pavers out than any of the public service workers involved, and we had that lot for about a year, and when that was done, we had it graded and soted for Mr. and Mrs. Fausti. Jim came to me then and said, "How would you like to dig out some pavers?" I said, "What do you mean?" And he said, "At the Perkins Street Lot at the end of East Urbana, we have all the pavers that came from nine square blocks of the Beckman Institute." And he said, "They're out there in piles." I went out, and when you go through the gates, immediately to the left of the road, there were piles of pavers that were probably about three foot high, and they extended back about a block where they were over my head, 10 and 12 foot high. The composition of these pavers was 50 or 60% dirt and 40% pavers. Mr. Madigan, I brought a paver, I think it's in a white sack there. These pavers weigh nine pounds, they're four inches square and almost nine inches square, uh, long. The city of Urbana and Jim Kelly would come out once a week with a bulldozer and turn the bottom of that pile and loosen it up. Now, you can imagine, they've been there since Beckman, that's nine square blocks of pavers. This was labor intensive. We did this for four years. We had a total involvement with the city of Urbana that lasted six years, and PACA made $72,000 at 50 cents apiece. That's a little more than $10,000 a year. It takes an average person three and a half hours to fill a pallet. 60% of our sales are on pallets. Even if they have to come out and take them off the pallet and put them in their trunk, they won't pick them out of dirt. 80% of our sales are done other than eight to five. We were open every Wednesday night from 4:00 to 7:00, every Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00, and every Sunday from 11:00 to 1:00. Is the city of Urbana prepared to offer those hours to the general public? I would estimate that we sold 200,000 pavers in that six and a half years to over 600 or 700 people. I think we serviced the community in the area well, and I don't think the city of Urbana can do any better. We were then offered a pile of bricks that it was like Christmas time. In the middle of the lot out there on Perkins Road was this great big pile of bricks, I estimated 60,000 or 70,000, with no dirt, or hardly any dirt. And I was told by Mr. Lass Stratton that if we palletized them, PACA could have half the pallets, and the other half would go to the city of Urbana. And I said, "Fine." This was such a bonanza, because we didn't have to dig them out, it was like Christmas time. It still took three and a half hours, though, to fill that pallet. We were just into it, we had done 37 pallets, and the city stopped us, because they said that they're starting a boneyard beautification project, and it was their intention to do all of the banks of the boneyard with pavers. And I thought that was a very nice idea, you know? So for two years, we didn't sell any pavers for the city of Urbana. In the meantime, Mr. Schmidt from the Public Works Department in Champagne asked us if we would palletize approximately 150,000 pavers behind the Middle Gold Building in Champagne, and he would give us a fair share. I said, "Yes." Lincoln Challenge helped us one weekend, we did 70 pallets. We had a weekend for just PACA volunteers, we did 54 pallets. And when it was all over and done with, the city of Champagne gave me 40 pallets of really good pavers already stacked and wrapped. I didn't have a place to put them. Tom Schu from the city of Champagne called somebody from the city of Urbana and asked if they could be stored on the lot of Perkins Street Road, and they said, "Yes." So at that time, I had 40 pavers, pallets packed on Perkins Road, which belonged to PACA from Champagne. I also had half of 37 pallets that we had done in that agreement with Mr. Stratton for the pile that was almost all pavers. When the beautification project was, I thought, done, and I looked and there were no bricks used, I went to Mr. Collins and I said, "Can we resume doing the pile of pavers in the middle of Perkins Street Road?" He said, "No, Mr. Swisher, everything out there is now considered Urbana City property." I says, "Why is that?" He said, "Possession is nine tenths of the law." So I protested, and I went to see Mr. Gray, and he heard me out, and he said, "I'll talk to Mr. Collins." About a week later, Mr. Collins called me and said, "All right, you can have your 40 pallets, and there are 17 pallets left of the 37 that you did, you can have nine of those, that's half, and I want them out of there as soon as possible, we're not going to store your luggage anymore." So I don't know what happened, or why I was all of a sudden not popular with the city of Urbana, or Public Works, I should say, and Mr. Collins. Mr. Collins, when we started this project, was low on the totem pole, and more often than not, he was the person who came out in a bulldozer and turned the pile. After about two years of that, he came to us and said, "You know, I got a better idea, Swish, we got these long pads of concrete out there, why don't you let me just spread them out about a foot high, and it'll be easier pickings?" And I thought that was a great idea, and it worked great for us for two years. So that's the type of cooperation that we had until this last thing. Up until last week, I had never sold a paver to anybody other than the citizens of Champagne or Urbana in East Central Illinois. I was afraid that my 40 pallets out there and my nine pallets were in jeopardy, so I sold those to a commercial dealer in Milwaukee for 35 cents apiece last week. I got $4,400 for PACA. And as we speak, I have some empty pallets out there and about a half pallet of pavers that I feel belong to PACA. Sometime in February, Mr. Gray called me, and I don't remember his exact words, but my, I feel that I was offering, he said, "Would you like to have the pavers on Broadway Avenue?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Do you have a place to put them?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Do you need confirmation from your board of directors?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Are you sure you have the lot on North Lincoln Avenue?" I said, "I'll make sure tomorrow." And he said, "Fine, get back to me." I emailed my board of directors, and within an hour, I had a majority that, yes, we would take the things. Oh, he did say one other thing. He said, "Don't get your hopes up, because the city council may not approve this until 2016, you may not get them in 2015." I said, "That's fine, as long as we're going to get them." I called George Chaplin, who donated this to North Lincoln Avenue in Urbana, and he said, "Come out and see me." I told him that I was pretty sure we were going to get the Broadway bricks, and he said, "How long do you need a lot?" And I said, "Maybe two years." And he said, "Fine, it's a good cause and it worked fine for Champagne." He had referenced the champagne, because in the lull of the two years when I didn't do any bricks for the city of Urbana, Mr. Schultz, or Schmidt from Public Works in Champagne called me and asked me if I would take the pavers from the Healy Street Development, where they're building a great big building on campus at Sixth and Green, and they were replacing that with concrete. And I said, "Yes." And that's when George gave me the permission to use that lot. They delivered all of the pavers, probably about 50,000, 60,000, to that lot on May the 23rd, and by Labor Day, I'd sold them all to 66 people in Champagne, Urbana. I sold 10,000 to Ingram Nursery and Homer. I sold 10,000 to Dr. Youngerman in downtown Champagne. I sold 4,000 to the half-owner of A&R Construction. I sold 2,000 to the half-owner of Bush Brothers. I think it was a very successful campaign. I don't think the citizens of East Central Illinois have lacked a marketplace to buy pavers. I would think the city of Urbana has enough problems of their own without going into the paver business. After my discussion with the mayor that lasted over an hour, she said, "I'll talk to Mr. Gray." She called me the next day and said she had a very pleasant conversation with Mr. Gray, and Mr. Gray had agreed to give us the pile, half of the pile that was still left out there at Perkins Road. And I said, "What about Broadway?" She said, "We didn't discuss Broadway." And I said, "Well, that isn't satisfactory to me." I said, "My main content in that two-page letter was 120,000 pavers on Broadway." And I said, "I'd like to go to the city council and express my grievance." And she said, "I'll make that happen." The next day, her secretary, Mrs. Ross, called me and said, "I understand you need an appointment with Mr. Gray and Mr. Collins, and where would you like to have it?" And I jokingly said, "Well, two against one, I'd like to have it in my living room." But there was no comment from Mrs. Ross, and she said, "Well, are you available tomorrow at 1:00?" And I said, "Yes, I have an appointment at 9:00 in the morning and Doctor's appointment at 3:00, but I could be where at 1:00?" And she said, "At the Office of Public Works." And I said, "Who will be there?" And she said, "I have every indication that both Mr. Gray and Mr. Collins will be there, because they're not checked out at the office, so there must be some procedure at Public Works where the employees sign in or sign out." She did not say to me directly, "Mr. Gray and Mr. Collins will both be there," but that was what I expected. I showed up at 1:00, and Mr. Collins took me back to his office, and I said, "Where's Mr. Gray?" And he said, "I'm the best you're going to get. You can share your grievances with me." I gave him the two-page letter, he made some pencil comments on it. The last paragraph, there was a reference to a woman who came out every Saturday morning with a bucket of water and wire brush, cleaned bricks to find the right color. She needed 100 of them all the same red shade. He says, "That's who we want to serve." I said, "I've already served her. We've served her for all this time." And I asked him what had happened between the relationships that we had, you know, but because that February call, the next time I saw Mr. Gray was at a board meeting, an annual board meeting in PACA, which I think was April 26. Laura Pressing was there, and Mr. Gray was there to receive an honor from PACA. Near the end of the proceedings, I went to Mr. Gray in front of Mr. Pressing, and I said, "How are we doing on Broadway?" He informed me that they would probably let the contracts the last part of June, and that PACA would be getting the pavers in July or August. And I said, "Thank you." So that was April 26. I left that meeting, and in the interim, there was an article published in the News Gazette talking about the Urbana City Council approving that, substituting the concrete for the pavers. Dr. Youngerman or one of his associates called the city of Urbana and were told that Bob Swisher and PACA would be selling those pavers. Dr. Youngerman was at PACA on Saturday morning and made arrangements with me to buy 20,000 pavers at 50 cents apiece, on the same deal that he'd bought 10,000 a couple of years ago from the city of Champagne. That deal was that we would palletize them, wrap them in visqueen, or put them in canvas bags and deliver them to his site at 50 cents apiece. Now, we had to buy the canvas bags, we had to buy the visqueen, we had to buy the pallets, and we had to hire somebody to deliver them. So we didn't make 50 cents a brick on those 10,000. He wrote us a check for $5,000. My biggest concern right now is twofold. First of all, I think the city of Urbana reneged on an offer that they made PACA, and I acted on that offer appropriately and did everything they asked me to do. My second concern is that if this body turns me down and doesn't give me the 120,000 pavers, are they prepared to keep my word to Dr. Youngerman and sell him 20,000 at 10 cents, at 50 cents apiece, and deliver them to him on a pallet or plastic canvas bags? The picture you see up there now is the 22 acres that George Chaplin- The picture you see up there now is the 22 acres that George Chaplin donated to us. I paid $245 to have that lot mowed. I've bought 16 rolls of Visqueen. I've made arrangements with Bush Brothers and Kraft to get pallets. I've talked to Bill May extensively and he's going to provide me with public service help. The shed you see there was donated by an Urbana firm on Goodwin Avenue. They came out and they set it up. The sign was donated by an Urbana firm, Urbana Banners. The city recycling, the waste recycling center let me use their fence with corporate approval. All in all, what I'm trying to say to you is for the last nine or 10 years, we've had excellent rapport with the citizens of Champaign, Urbana. The other offer that I was prepared to make, but since Mr. Gray was not at the meeting, I was under the impression he could weigh in on any offer and could approve it. So I told Mr. Collins, "If there is another not-for-profit organization that feels cheated and if they can provide land and the same services that PACA has provided for these eight or nine years, I'll gladly give them half of those 120,000 bricks. I'll even give them half of Dr. Youngerman's $10,000." I don't believe there's another organization that likes Lincoln Challenge and they can't do it now because they're underfunded. And I've talked to the officials from Habitat. They said, "We build houses, we don't stack bricks." So it's my hope that I come out of this meeting with 120,000 pavers. Lacking that, it is my hope that the city council will make good on my word to Dr. Youngerman. It ends here for me. I'm not going to sue the city. I have members that have volunteered to hire attorneys and sue the city for breach contract. I'm not doing that. If it's over and done with, it's over and done with. I feel PACA has given its best and we kept our side of the bargain. And I think the thing that finally killed me at the last of my meeting with Mr. Collins, he said to me, "You don't have anything in writing." And I said, "Oh, you're going to pull that trick, huh?" We didn't have anything in writing for nine or 10 years and it seemed to work pretty good. So all of a sudden, we need something in writing. Now, as to that point, Mr. Collins also brought up the legality of the city giving bricks to PACA. Are you all familiar with a house on a park next to Urbana, Lincoln Lodge? It's called the Workman's Cottage. It's the oldest known edifice in Champaign County. It was on the University of Illinois campus across from Union High School. They wanted to tear it down. I think Hiram Paley was the mayor of Urbana then and Jones Severn-Champaign and the Historical Society had just had a fit. So the solution was to give that building to PACA. PACA moved it to that lot where it sits now and for $85,000 in in-kind services, we fixed it up. We got titled to that house with a meeting with Governor Thompson, a city official named Darling, I don't know what his capacity was, Tom Schu from Champaign, Karen Coomer, Senator Weaver, and Helen Satherway all went to Springfield. We met with Governor Thompson and they have a company over there in our state government, I call it their grocery store. They handle all the property for all of the cities and so forth. If the City of Urbana wants to give away a fire truck, it has to go to Springfield and a township gets it or a village gets it or some other city can get it if they don't trade it in. We were given a letter of certification that qualified us to receive unwanted city property and property that was deemed useless. They gave a copy of that letter to Mr. Darling, to Mr. Schu, to Mr. Hesher Swart from Facilities and Planning at the University of Illinois. And so therefore, we are authorized legally by the state of Illinois to receive unwanted goods. When we first started this, Mr. Kelly took me to see the city manager and Mr. Waller. That was the reference that the city manager said, "You mean they can give us a house and we don't want to give them bricks without getting permission?" That house that we gave them, we rented to the National Arbor Society for either $860 or $680 for eight years and we split the rent with the City of Urbana. At the end of that eight years, we sold that house and lot to the Panabarchet district for $2. It's their executive offices today. I don't think anybody sitting in this circle can say that PACA has been a bad neighbor. I think we've served the community well and I would hope that this unit would give me my 120,000 pavers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Swisher?
It's not so much for Mr. Swisher. Well, I guess it's, okay, I'll put it in the form of a question. Do you understand that since we don't have an action item on the agenda tonight, we can't actually act tonight?
I was told that would happen.
And I guess we can't even, I guess we can't even, actually, and the only thing we're allowed to do with respect to community input is to ask questions. We're not really allowed to discuss things. But I will express a hope that we revisit this on a future agenda.
I have one more comment. I have a friend who lives in Urbana, who's an Urbana businessman, who said to me, "Swish, why are you doing this? He said, "They're going to rake you over the coals. They'll give you your head and your hand." He said, "They'll have a secret vote. The vote will be four to two and you'll lose and you'll be the last thing on the agenda." And I said, "I don't think that happened." So I must express a disappointment that Dennis Roberts isn't here tonight because that's who I asked to speak for me and I don't know why he isn't here. He showed me that he would be here and I didn't see my name on the printed agenda. And I hope my friend's prediction isn't true. Are there any more questions? Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it's more of an explanation of what I understood our action to be, to try to explain it a little bit better. In February, the way I understood it was we weren't going to save the bricks at all. I never heard anything about PACA. And I argued pretty strongly and we had some email exchanges about saving the bricks. So I was encouraged on July 1st, I think I got an email from Bill Gray saying that we were going to save the bricks, but still didn't say anything about PACA. So thanks for bringing this to our attention. This is the first I've heard about any kind of prior arrangement we had.
Well, the only proof that I can offer is, why would I email my nine board of directors? I mean, I wouldn't make this up out of nowhere and I asked them not to say anything about it until it was public. And when it was public in the newspaper, that's when, you know, my board of directors called me and congratulated me. That's when Dr. Youngerman, which I've already explained, came to me and so forth. So I'm not in the habit of making stories up like this.
Thanks.
Anything else that I can?
Okay, Eric wants to say something.
The only thing I can assure you of is that we will not have any secret votes about this. We're really pretty scrupulous about, you know, we've got an open meetings act and we observe that really scrupulously. So whatever we do will be in public view, will be recorded for, you know, by the same cameras that are recording this and...
It would have helped if I could have had you go to all the locations. Can we run through this real quick and let me explain these things and just take, you know, four or five minutes?
We've already spent quite a bit of time. I think you've made your case very well. So we will put this on the agenda for the committee meeting that's coming up next week, okay?
All right, thank you.
I have Joe Lamb and then Christina Nordholm and you wanted to talk to?
I just wanted to speak briefly on that subject.
Okay, well, why don't you wait till the other two people and then, yeah, just turn yours in.
Hi, my name's Joe Lamb. I'm with Champaign Asphalt and we're at 1414 West Anthony Drive in Urbana. And first of all, I want to say it's nice to be here, not discussing Champaign Asphalt. Secondly, I would like to say that not only is Bob Swisher one of my favorite people in town, but Bill Gray is as well. And I think the council and the mayor and the whole city are very fortunate to have both of them. They're wonderful people and they are wonderful assets to the city. I came here tonight as a friend of Bob Swisher, who's a great friend of my father's, Gene Lamb, who you heard from earlier. We've done a lot of work with Bob and the bricks and I would just say that historically, there are many jurisdictional things that we work on. Many times, we unearth brick pavers when we're working on IDOT jobs within the City of Urbana, within Savoy, within the City of Champaign, throughout the whole county. And PACA has been a wonderful resource. I don't know much more than what I've heard tonight. I came here literally as a friend for Bob's and to find out what the issue was. As I've listened to it, it seems like this is a really great opportunity for good government to work and to maybe sit down and figure out a great way that this can continue. I firsthand know one of our employees who's now a member of Local 703, started by doing service hours on these bricks when he was out of high school and is now not only a good-standing member of 703, but is working towards his apprenticeship with Operators Engineers 841. And so it has been a building block, not only for the Lincoln's Challenge, but to local kids who have come out and have been interested in the construction industry. And frankly, when you come from urban areas, it's very hard to get interested in the construction industry. I've spent extensive time with Dennis Schmidt in the City of Champaign and Bill Gray in the City of Urbana, trying to put together a way that we can get kids that aren't really agricultural-oriented or growing up on farms to take to these trades and to do this. And so there have been a handful of instances where we've been able to do this and we've been able to do it with the help of PACA and the City of Champaign and the City of Urbana. And so if there's a chance or an opportunity for this body to sit down and talk about a possible way for this to continue, because I can attest, this won't be a profit source for the City of Urbana. I've seen the hours, I've participated in the hours, and there's no exaggeration to what he said about what goes into getting a pallet of bricks. And many times, just like the bricks we unearthed from Washington Street on the Route 130 job this past year, it took them about two or three days before they realized that none of the bricks were suitable. That happens more often than you'll hear about tonight. And so I would just urge the group, "Thank you for your time. I thank you for your work. I especially thank Bill Gray and his staff for what they do for the city. And most of all, I thank PACA and Bob Swisher. I would love it if this group could get together and come to some resolution." Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah. You know, last February, didn't know this was going to get this complicated. All we wanted to do was make the bricks available to the public and not have them end up being dropped in a landfill. That was the intent of the council. But you raised an interesting point. I'm a little concerned that the bricks on Broadway may be so far gone that they may not be, you know, so that's an interesting point.
And I was just illustrating that many times, it's a not-so-frugal dig, so to speak, you know?
Yeah. So we may be, we probably should check the quality of the bricks too before we get any whole lot further into this because I know some of them were in pretty bad shape. But the intent of the council was simply to make the bricks available to the public and not have them dropped in a landfill. So I'm sure we can figure something out at committee next week.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Christina Nordholm?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Christina Nordholm and I'm a resident of Urbana and I happen to be one of the crazy people that spent hours digging bricks out of piles. I heard about the bricks from PACA. That's the milieu of people that inform me about historical reclamation that's going on in our town. They're like-minded people and they encourage the kinds of crazy activities like replumbing an old sink, you know, replumbing, digging up architectural details and putting them to enhance our homes here in Urbana and Champaign. The bricks is part of what they do and the kind of thing that they do well in sense of spreading the information about the availability and the possible uses of these. They can give me examples that I can drive around and see. This is what this person did in their driveway. This is how that person edged their garden path, to give me the encouragement that I needed to take on the task of the work that I did with the bricks. I spent hours digging through the piles. It was all Wednesday nights because that was the time I had available, after hours. I don't know that I could have done that if they'd been made available through the City of Urbana. I also could go back. I could say, "Hey, this brick didn't fit the pattern. It's slightly different size, slightly different make." It was a painstaking and really frankly, an artistic undertaking, not the kind of thing that equates with when I drive down and get my bags of mulch from the landfill. So I just wanted to say that I think that PACA handles it well. They've got a history of it. I would encourage the city to continue allowing PACA to take the lead with regard to distributing and taking care of these bricks. It's a messy, heavy job and if you can get volunteers to do it, go for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Greg Gable, is that correct?
Goble.
Goble, okay.
Thank you for your time. Greg Goble, resident of Champaign. I came to school here. I've been here in Champaign for the last nine years. Wanted to talk briefly about my experience with PACA nine years ago. Made a bad decision, had some community service to work off. Got in touch with Bob Swisher through PACA, through a friend. I also worked for Habitat for Humanity. It was something that I could do on the weekends on my own time. I worked full-time at the time. So it was a good experience for me, meeting Bob Swisher. You know, went out to the lot on North Perkins Road or Perkins Road, dug through the dirt, went into the brush that had grown up around the bricks over time, you know, pulling them out, scraping them with a putty knife, stacking them, you know, on the pallets. It just was a good experience and, you know, helped me get through a tough time. After that, recommending, you know, PACA, knowing kind of what they do, becoming more familiar with it, you know, knowing that agency and encouraging people to go there for whatever, you know, item that PACA restores or allows to have available for the public. I imagine that it's, even though that PACA puts in a lot of effort and has the volunteers, it is profitable for them and maybe helps them, you know, continue and do other things in that agency. So just wanted to describe that, my situation. Bob has called me at different times and said, "Hey, you know, needed a little help doing this or that, working at the Lincoln Hall or at the Graduate Library." So it's just, it's been a good experience and I wanted to let you guys know kind of what that was. And I do think it would be a shame if it was taken, you know, out of PACA's hands. I didn't know all the other details that Bob had described, but wanted to let you know how I felt about it. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? All right, we will move on. Unfinished business, we don't have any that we're going to deal with tonight, except here, the special city council meeting of the 13th. We have two ordinances. First is ordinance number 2015-07-066. And I think Mary Brooks wanted to talk about this.
Mother Brooks?
Oh, okay.
She's leaving? She's coming? All right. Okay, so Lori, go ahead.
I would just like to point out, the applicant has requested this item be continued to August 17th. She was unable to make the meeting tonight and also unable to organize a meeting with the neighborhood as council recommended last week.
Okay. She wants it to be on the 17th?
That's correct, yes.
And the same thing for ordinance number 067?
Correct, both items.
Both of them, okay. So I guess we don't have to talk about that. Mary Brooks, did you want to talk about those two things? They're going to be put off until August 17th. So do you want to say something now or do you want to come back on August 17th?
I've been the mayor of people also a while. Will I come back on 17th?
Okay, that'd be fine. All right, thank you, Lori. Reports are standing.
Is the motion in order, sending these to the 7th?
Well, she's withdrawing them. The person withdrew them, right?
Not withdrawing the application, has asked that you consider them on the 17th rather than...
Yeah, I think for cleanliness here, I'll move to send ordinance 2015-766 to council on August 17th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
There.
Okay. Committee of the whole, Aaron Ammons?
I'll do the other one too.
Oh, you didn't do both of them? Oh, you didn't do both of them? No, we're doing one at a time?
Do both of them for efficiency, but our legal staff thinks we need to do about omnibus. So I'll move ordinance 2015-767 to August seventeenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, Aaron Ammons?
All right, so on behalf of the committee of the whole, resolution number 2015-07-031R, a resolution approving a supportive housing program subrecipient agreement with Courage Connection, formerly the Center for Women in Transition, FY 2015-16 Community Development. For the, on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Resolution number 2015-07-032R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, JAG program, city of Urbana, city of Champaign, and Champaign County, on behalf of the UPD. And on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Bill?
Yeah, I wasn't at the meeting last week, but, so if this was already answered, sorry to ask it again. For the software, the forensic software for the computers, is any of that, can any of that be used remotely to access computers that we don't have possession of? I assume that would require some kind of warrant to do that, to access somebody's computer remotely. I mean, the ones we have possession of, we got possession legally, so I was curious how it would work if you access it remotely. We wouldn't be able to do that, I don't think, without a warrant, so, but if you don't know. Okay. Okay. Does anybody else know how that works?
Well, we have a motion on the floor by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any other discussion? Eric?
So I'm willing to take it as being implicit in the motion, if not explicit, that we're not authorizing anything illegal.
And we're not going to take a secret vote either, right?
Just for the record.
Okay. All right, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-071, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for FY 2015-16, the JAG grant. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Resolution number 2015-07-033R, a second amendment to resolution authorizing the creation of a task force to recommend how the city can improve understanding of data compiled in the I dot traffic study and respond to concerns raised by social justice organizations. A resolution to further extend the date for public review and comment and for submission of final report of findings and policy recommendations of I dot traffic study task force fines. So on behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-072, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Campus Communications Group, Incorporated. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Any discussion? Motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-073, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Metro Communications Company, Inc. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-074, an ordinance approving an agreement for use of right-of-way with Colorado Place LLC. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Motion by Ammons, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-075, an ordinance approving an ordinance extending authorization to Ameren Illinois Company to construct, operate, and maintain a gas utility system in the city of Urbana. A thirty-year agreement renewing Ameren Illinois Company franchise concerning gas utility system. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-076, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2015-2016 annual budget, the Ameren franchise agreement. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing? Yes. That motion carries.
Ordinance number 2015-07-077, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section Three, Dash Four, Three, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for premier entertainment of Illinois DBA flamingo slots seventeen-twenty Philo Road, Suite B. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Motion by Ammons, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, state law requires me to recuse myself.
Okay. Bill?
I had a question about the notice for the public hearing last week. The first few of these, we had the council received a copy of the notice with a map and, you know, the notice went out to the neighboring, not the notice that we get for the meeting ourselves, but the notice that goes out to the neighbors within five hundred feet. So I'd request that that continue, because I don't think we got that notice this time.
The mailing was sent out to all the people who live around there.
Do you know how many that was?
It was a huge number.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of them back, but the mailing did go out.
Okay. I just appreciate getting that same, that same format in our packets.
Well, we had the hearing and no one came to testify.
I understand, and that's, you know, that's why I'll probably vote for this, because if two hundred of them went out and nobody bothered to show up, then apparently they don't care. But I would be, I would appreciate seeing the notice that they get.
In the future?
In the future, like we did for the first couple of those that we got.
Okay. Anyone else? Diane?
For the record, I did receive emails from two constituents who are opposed to this.
Anyone else?
Was there some clarity offered to the objection that was raised by the gentleman at the last meeting at the committee of the whole?
I did send out an email.
I'd just like for it to be a part of the public record.
Okay. That he was not told that it was high criminal, it was, Jo-Linda Ross told him she thought the one across the street where he located would be better, and he has in fact made more money than any other location in the city. And so he's arguing that the old, the one that the new people want to get is not good, but then he's arguing that he should have gotten it, so it doesn't really make sense. So that was what my email was about. Eric?
Just for the record, I believe Jo-Linda's version of the story.
Is what?
I believe Jo-Linda Ross's version of the story, of their discussion.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Mr. Madigan is welcome back.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Reports of special committees, I don't believe we have any of those. Reports of officers?
Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the record.
Our police chief is here.
Thank you. I just want to address Mr. Brown's concerns from a few minutes ago. Tim McNutt, the detective that handles all of that, who's a lot smarter in this stuff than I am, said that forensic tools for in-house hardware, hard drives that have been legally seized and are in his possession only. Okay?
That's great. Thank you very much. I feel much better about my vote now.
Reports of officers?
The real issue is that Tim's actually watching this meeting and could respond, or...
Bill Gray, Director of Public Works.
Yeah, good evening. I asked Brad Bennett, Bruce Coverley, Mike Brunk to be here to give you an update on the Boneyard project, its status, and a little bit of what's going on out there, because that was some interest in an update anyway, so it's time.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. Appreciate coming here this evening to talk to you about the Boneyard Creek project. I guess I'll start out and cover kind of the six major categories of work we have remaining on the project. One of the, or the first five remaining items are slabjacking of the pavements on Ray Street that are adjacent to the bridge abutments. If anyone's driven down Ray Street, you'll hit a distinct bump where the bridge abutments are on Ray Street. We're looking at having that slabjack to even that pavement out, to create a nice, smooth ride through there, so that is an outstanding item we have to address. There is a feature that still has to be installed, and this is kind of over by the Station Theater Plaza. It's called a feature wall. It's a wall that is comprised of a metallic mesh with railroad timbers behind it. In fact, if you've been out on site, you might have seen the cut railroad timbers. That wall will be installed, and there's actually some lighting associated with that wall, so they're in the process of fabricating that right now, and we're hopeful that'll be installed shortly. So the wall is in two sections, kind of over by the Station Theater. You might notice there's some PVC tubes that stick out of the ground for where the conduit for the, for the lighting will be for those walls. We also have some sidewalk work on Broadway Avenue where the railroad crossing is. Norfolk Southern had to relocate the signals as part of the project, and they just recently completed that within the last month. So there's a little bit of sidewalk, specifically in front of the Station Theater there on the west side of Broadway, that has to be done, and a little bit of landscaping that goes along with that. And then the item that's probably the most noticeable out there, there is some bag wall repair that needs to be done with the wet June that we had. We had some high water levels out there. We had some undermining of the bag walls. The engineer on the project from Farnsworth believes it's from the water receding, and as that water comes out of the flooded areas, it carried material that was kind of behind and over the top of the bag walls off, and that allowed the walls to wash away and collapse, you know, some of the upper portions of them. The contractor will be replacing those at his expense. They'll also be installing erosion control fabric over and behind the bags to protect that, to keep that from happening in the future. There's also a suction pipe that you might notice that's, you can see in the bottom of the channel, that was exposed by undercutting from the high velocities from the flood events. And once again, that's something that the contractor, it's his expense to fix, kind of under the warranty period of the project. And they'll be installing a stone gabion mattress, which is kind of a metallic cage filled with rock over the top of it to protect it and keep it from becoming exposed or washed away in the future. And then the fifth item, there's a kind of a planter area directly under Trussell Bridge that has been scoured out. We're looking at coming up with a repair method for that. That one will actually probably result in a change order and some extra costs, because that was an unanticipated condition. So we're considering a couple of options. We're working with the engineer as well as getting some input from Bruce on what the best ways do it. We want to make sure for all these options, when we fix it this additional time, that this is the last time that we have to fix it, whatever solution that we implement for that. We want to make sure it's not a reoccurring problem out there. And then kind of the final item, I guess I wanted to discuss for remaining work out there was, was just punchless items. We had done a final inspection with the contractor and the engineer on the project, and there's a list, and these are mostly minor items, kind of ranging from plant replacement, you know, for areas where we've had plants die along Race or Broadway or the Boneyard Creek itself, to, you know, light bulb replacements for the Trussell Bridge, manhole adjustments, insulation on pipes, just a lot of little, kind of small to-do items, you know, nothing major in them, but stuff that the contractor is obligated to complete before the project is officially done and closed. Talk a little bit about financials, because I know that was a concern. The original, and I'm going to kind of round these up to round numbers, but the original contract for the project was seven point nine million. To date, we've had about three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in change orders, which brings the total revised contract to about eight point two million. We paid about seven point eight million dollars to the contractor to date, so we've got about, you know, four hundred and forty thousand dollars in outstanding payments due to them. In the fourteen-fifteen fiscal year budget, we had actually budgeted under TIF II, one million dollars to pay out the remaining expenses on the Boneyard Creek project. To date, we've still got about five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of that left that haven't been paid out, that is available to pay the remaining expenses on the project. And like I mentioned, we've got, we anticipate four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in expenses to the contractor. We have about two thousand dollars of outstanding payments to the engineering firm. We figure we have about another forty-eight thousand to the Railroad Corporation for work related to the Broadway Avenue signal work and some flagging work that we'll have for those sidewalk work coming up on Broadway Avenue. About twelve thousand dollars in landscape maintenance costs, that's for maintaining the landscape along Broadway and Ray Street. So I have it totaling about five hundred and four thousand dollars in estimated expenses left. So with five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars available, we feel pretty comfortable that we'll be able to do it within what we had budgeted. Obviously, those expenses will be reprogrammed, the remaining five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in TIF II, but those, it was a budgeted expense in the fourteen-fifteen budget, so... And then as far as, you know, expenses, like I mentioned, the slabjacking, that will be an additional expense. that will be an additional expense. We're waiting to get that number from the contractor, but I'm told it's not a significant expense. And the planter area similarly, whatever we decide to do with that, we'll have to come up with a cost and determine it. But it's possible too, in discussions with Bill, that we might pay those items out of the stormwater utility fee possibly if funds aren't available under TIF. So I guess with that, I'll open it up to any questions and concerns.
Any questions? Diane?
A couple. I've walked there a bunch of times, actually, through the spring. And I've noticed that in the sidewalk going up to Broadway, you can look under the sidewalk and actually stick your arm under there for... At least I can stick mine arm under there up to my elbow. So it appears that the soil is washing away under the sidewalk. Is that part of the bag wall repair? So that's what you mean by fixing that erosion there?
Yeah, they'll stabilize that with flowable fill, which is like a cementous material to eliminate any void under the sidewalk before they complete building the bag walls back up.
What will prevent that from happening in other places under the sidewalk?
Well, what they're going to do is they're going to put down an erosion control blanket, which is kind of a nylon-type material, kind of almost like a fishnet that essentially holds the soil in place when water washes across the surface. So the idea is that should prevent the water from washing that material behind the bag wall and keep it stable.
Is that the stuff that's washed away on the side of the, if you, that's that same nylon mesh?
Yeah. And like I said, we've had the engineer out there a few times to look at it while it was flooding. And what he's saying is the material's actually washing away, not when the stream is initially coming up, but actually when the water levels start dropping, the water comes off the sidewalk. And as it's moving back to the stream, essentially, that's where it's pulling that material up above the bag walls off. And that force of the water actually going back to the stream is what's pulling the streams back into the bag. And he feels that by, you know, putting this erosion control blanket over the top of it rather than bare earth, that that'll protect it.
And that's under the warranty?
Well, the contractor was supposed to do that on the project, but they chose not to. So that's why they're responsible for fixing it and then installing it correctly. We've also been in contact with the manufacturer of the bag company. And in fact, they're actually looking at our proposed solution to it to make sure that it is the right solution, to make sure that there isn't future damage. So we've been working with the actual manufacturer of the bags to ensure... Because like I said, we want to make sure that whatever's done the second time is a lasting solution, and we don't have to deal with this again.
Are those bags actually supposed to grow something?
They are filled with dirt, and the idea is that, yes, hopefully we get vegetation on them. In fact, that's one of the things we're waiting to hear back from the bag manufacturer, and what is the best way to get vegetation on those. The landscape architect on the project originally had some plantings of ground cover around it with the idea that those plantings would grow and eventually grow into the bag. That seems to be taking a long time. So one of the questions we've asked the bag manufacturer is if we could hydroseed the bags, which is, you know, spraying a hydraulic mulch material with seed in it onto the bags to get a quicker greening up of the bags. So that's something that we're waiting to hear back from them, if that's something that we can do and we would look at doing if they approved it.
Eric?
If I understand, you know, the issue, it's that when the water recedes, when the water, you know, comes up, it creates a kind of muddy slurry. And then when the water recedes, the dirt particles and the water come out together. So presumably, the nylon mesh is going to let water through, but it's fine enough that it's not going to let dirt particles through? Is that the...
Yeah, that's the concept behind it, that it would hold the soil particles in place.
And what is the expected lifetime of that? Is that going to degrade at some point? What's it made of? You said nylon, but nylon isn't a permanent... Isn't a permanent material outside in the environment? I don't think. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
I'm told by the engineering firm that it's a UV stabilized plastic, so it will last a long time. Obviously, nothing lasts forever, but... And honestly, once the vegetation gets sufficiently rooted, it shouldn't be an issue. The problem is, you know, we planted the plant materials last fall, and they hadn't really had a chance to get their root systems fully developed. If we hadn't had as wet a spring we had this year, you know, if we had a year for the plant material to grow, it might not have been such a severe issue. There might have been more plant root mass to hold that soil in place. So really, the erosion control blanket is to kind of a temporary measure until you can get sufficient vegetation in place. But like I said, we planted a lot of that stuff last fall, and then we got hit with the heavy rains this spring. And there's just not enough root mass, you know, deep enough or wide enough to hold that stuff in place.
Okay. Bill, and then Diane.
Yeah, I had a question about the area where the kind of stepping stones are that seems to be where a lot of the sediment accumulates. Is the thought that that sediment accumulation is mostly just from where the bags washed out? Or is this something that's going to probably be an ongoing thing? Because anytime it floods, you're going to have a lot of sediment coming down the stream, and that seems to be a natural eddy where this water slows down and drops its sediment load. So is there anything you've thought about trying to get rid, to, you know, make that area easier to clean up or less likely to accumulate sediment?
Well, the first part of your question, it is related to actual sediment load in the water. If you observe the Boneyard Creek during a storm, it looks like the color of coffee with cream. And there's a lot of dirt in the water from storm events. And we think what's happening there is it's just depositing. Kind of the north side of the channel, kind of what would be the inside of the curve through there, the velocities are higher, so you don't see the deposition on the north side of the channel. On the south side, the velocities are extremely slow, and that's where the sediment's dropping out of the water. The engineer on the project has actually come up with a potential solution to that. We have to do some additional investigation to make sure it'll work, but there's some, I want to say they call them finger wears that you can construct out in the channel to force the velocities essentially to the higher velocities to the south-sided channel to try to prevent that deposition. So that is something that we're looking in. But that, once again, that would be an additional cost, and we haven't priced that out yet. But it will be an ongoing problem, but there is a potential solution. And we're investigating that and going to try to cost that out and see if that's something that we can do.
Okay, thanks.
Diane? Did that answer your question? Okay. Charlie?
So I guess there's one bit of damage left that still needs to be repaired, and that's going to be on our dime. Is that, do I understand, did the bridge scour?
There's a planter area right under the Trussell Bridge, and that was one area where that erosion control blanket wasn't specified, so it wouldn't have been the contractor's responsibility. So for that, we're looking at a couple options, you know, trying to maybe put some stones down there. You're looking at the erosion control fabric as well, but trying to come up with a plan for that.
I think maybe we can try to use some pavers there. Sorry, I had to stick that in somewhere. So you don't expect the cost to be very much then, right?
We're hopeful it's not. I mean, you know, the area has to be repaired, and there's actually irrigation system in there that'll have to be fixed too because it was damaged when that area was washed out. So I mean, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars type of expense, but probably several thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mike, Madigan?
So with regard to the last item you were speaking of, is that, you said the erosion control material wasn't specified. Is that a design flaw?
I would say it was an unanticipated condition. So it wasn't specified as that area having it, yes?
Wasn't specified by the engineers?
Yes.
Okay. Is any of this, any of the rest of this, what's going on, would you consider it, other than the contractor's not putting down the fabric in the appropriate places, are there design flaws?
Not that I'm aware of. You know, it's challenging anytime you're working around a channel and, you know, moving water. But, you know, based on my engineering judgment, I mean, what they appeared to have specified, I mean, it appears sound. And like I said, we did work with the bag manufacturers to make sure it was an appropriate application for their project. And we recently had representatives from the bag manufacturer out, and we're assured by them that our project was a good application for their product and that they would make it right kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to determine. I know it's a complex project, obviously, but, you know, and we employed an outside engineering firm, right?
Correct, yeah.
Obviously, so just kind of curious what their responsibility is here on an ongoing basis. And then the other question Diane talked about, a warranty. Help me out. I mean, what kind of warranty do we have here?
It's a one-year warranty. So the project was completed in December of 2014. So the one-year warranty period would be through December 2015.
Diane?
So I assume that the trees that have been washed out will be replaced with maybe something more appropriate for the space?
Well, I might defer that one to Bruce, but I think the plan is, because they've washed out three times now, not to put them back. Yeah.
Probably is a good decision.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Did you want to comment, any, Bruce, or...?
Oh, Bruce is here. Bruce Coverley, arborist. We want something with lots of roots, right?
Yeah, probably herbaceous at that level. I think some of this, again, is design that we're learning as it goes on. And I think a certain level up the bank probably shouldn't have trees. And so that's where those that have come out are right now, and we'll replace that with a different kind of plant.
Eric?
Is that a place that really wants to be a wetlands, that can, you know...
Well, it's a floodplain. I mean, it's not necessarily going to have the same characteristics as a wetland where you'd have water more often and it'd be more saturated at longer periods of time. But I've been looking up, like, kinds of plants that grow in floodplain meadows, things like that.
Okay. Yeah, so that sounds great. So basically, it'll be something like a replication or of a floodplain meadow to a...
Yeah.
Festivity.
Yeah, more like.
Any other questions?
One last quick one.
Diane?
Is that sculpture going to last two years? It appears to have had some unfortunate...
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I guess a question for public arts. The reason that it has the cattle gates around it, I guess, is that someone either climbed up on it or intentionally vandalized it. That's why it has the protection around it. But I mean, the materials it's made out of, I would think, would be able to withstand two years of outdoor exposure. I mean, it's a plastic and a rubber material that they're made out of.
So the gates are, the fencing is going to stay?
I believe it has to because of the damage that was done to the sculptures already.
That looks really bad.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you on that.
Bill Brown?
Okay, one more. I don't know if you guys can answer it, but the school district parking, were those signs going to be changed to say Monday through Friday only? No parking Monday through Friday only?
I know there's been some discussions on that. Let me follow up and report back to you. I know John Collins was in some discussions with the school district on doing it. The school district initially paid for those signs. So if we're going to change them, I think it would be on us to, you know, do the new signs for them. Since they went to the expense of initially producing them.
Can we maybe bag them on weekends?
Well, let me talk to John Collins and get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other reports of officers? We will move on. New business, ordinance number 2015-07-080, an ordinance approving a major variance to allow a duplex on a lot 50 feet wide and 4,737 square feet in area in the city's R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District at 703 West High Street. Here we are.
All right. Good evening. I will try and keep this...
Kevin Garcia.
Very brief. So, okay. So yes, this is a variance request to allow a duplex on the property at 703 West High Street. The property currently contains a single-family home that was converted into a duplex sometime around the late 1950s or the early 1960s. The applicant has owned the property since 1986. And when he purchased the property, the house had a temporary certificate of occupancy to allow its use as a duplex only until March 1st, 1988. According to the applicant, he was unaware of the temporary certificate of occupancy. It doesn't appear that the former owner shared that information. So he has been using the property as a duplex since he took ownership. This case was also heard with a conditional use permit case originally by the ZBA on April 15th of this year. And the initial vote at that time, there were only three people voting, and it was later determined in consultation with our city attorney that the case should be reheard because there weren't actually enough votes to take action on the case. So the case was then heard on June 17th, and the ZBA reheard both cases and granted a conditional use permit and recommended approval of the major variance case by votes of five to zero in each of those cases. They did add a condition that the occupancy of the building would be essentially the same that it would have if it were a single-family house. So the language there is that the entire duplex building be subject to the same occupancy limitations that a single-family dwelling unit must adhere to. This property is located on the northwest side of the Westerbana neighborhood. It's on High Street just, let's see, yeah, you can see it there, just west of Kohler. This area, the land use map that you can see in Exhibit A, I think, yeah. It also shows the, it shows how many rental properties are in the area as well. There's a lot. Let's see what the key is. Yeah, anything that's in yellow is a rental property. So you can see where this property is located. It's predominantly a rental area that people rent buildings to students because it's just two blocks from the university. Now, back in 1983, the city of Urbana conducted a Westerbana land use survey, which was an attempt to try and correct zoning or land use violations in Westerbana specifically. And this property at that time did not meet the minimum lot requirements or the area requirements for use as a duplex. And the city allowed owners to try and provide proof that if something looked illegal, if you could say that it was used in whatever the non-conforming use was prior to 1950, the city would say, okay, we'll let you continue that. However, the previous property owner didn't really, according to our records, they didn't really furnish anything that said for certain that the property was a duplex when it would have been legal. So that's when they granted the temporary certificate of occupancy to allow its use as a duplex until 1988. And then in the meanwhile, they sold the property to the current applicant, and he's used the building as duplex since then. Yeah, I think, you know, the continued use as a duplex would be appropriate. It's been used that way for at least 30 years. I mean, it hasn't caused a nuisance to neighboring properties or anything along those lines. Fits in with the comprehensive plan. And like I said, it's in an area where the prevailing use is rental housing for students. So really, to allow it to continue as a duplex with two rental units would be pretty compatible with the area. Very briefly, I'll run through the variance criteria. The first one is that we feel that allowing this property to continue being used as a duplex would not be granting it a special privilege. The second point is that the variance request was not knowingly created by the petitioner. The third point is that a duplex use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Number four is that it would not cause a nuisance to adjacent properties. And since they're not proposing to alter the building or expand the building in any way, the variance does represent the minimum deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. So in this case, the city council can either approve it, can approve the variance request. You can approve the variance request with terms and conditions, or you can deny the variance. At the June 17th meeting, the ZBA voted five to zero to recommend approval for the major variance with the condition that I stated earlier, which is that the entire duplex building be subject to the same occupancy limitations that a single-family dwelling unit must adhere to, and that no more than one household and three additional unrelated persons may occupy the entire duplex. That's my report, and I can answer questions or... That's my report and I can answer questions or, as you heard from the petitioner earlier, he can, he's willing to answer questions as well.
Diane?
The condition seems reasonable, but my one question is, does the condition and the variance travel forward in time in the event the building is sold? And how will future buyers be notified that this condition exists? I mean, they could, will run into the same problem again where there was not knowledge of the temporary certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, well, to answer the first part of your question, the conditional use permit and the variance would travel with the property.
And is that included in a description of the property and the deed? Or how does a future owner know about this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how, how that would work. Maybe Lori can shed some light on this.
The approval documents are all recorded, so if you get a title search, then you would have access to those materials.
You would receive those materials?
Yes, you should receive those materials and you should read them when you get the title, title searched out.
Mr. Jacobson?
But I guess what we do know is that the, is that those, that information will be available in the recorder's office. I don't think there's a way that we can legislate or, or, you know, put in an ordinance a mandate that, for example, Todd would, would explicitly transmit that information to the buyer.
No, you expect your attorney to, to do his or her job, but, okay, as long as it's, as long as that information is included with that, that's my main concern, okay.
Anyone else? Bill?
Just for clarification, this is a condition on a major variance, not a conditional use, right? The conditional use actually wouldn't transfer on a sale, but since this is a condition of the variance, that would actually be recorded? Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, both would be recorded, but yes, as it is a condition on the variance, that in particular runs with the land. Oftentimes, as you know, the conditional uses do run with the individual, but this does run with land.
Okay, thanks.
Eric Jacobson?
Having no further substantive questions or disagreements with the presentation, I would like to move approval.
Motion by Jacobson.
Second.
Second by Ammons. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next are mayoral reappointments. I have Lisa Mosley for the Human Relations Commission, Stan Schut for the Market at the Square Advisory Board, and Bob Kleis for the Market Square Advisory Board.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.